For the screen. There we go. We'll call a Shakopee City Council meeting for September 5th to order, and we'll ask our clerk to please take the roll.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Delaney? Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Lehman?
Here. Item number two, if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, 3A, lifesaving award presentation by Chief Tate and Chief Scott, Fire Department. Go ahead, sirs.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. Chief Scott and I are honored tonight to introduce you to a real hero in our community, Mr. Nikita Izewski. Now, hero is a term I think that gets thrown around a lot these days, but make no mistake about it, Mr. Izewski is a true hero. On July 27th, he was enjoying a nice day at the pool, his association pool, when he heard screaming. He walked up and noticed that there was a small child at the bottom of the pool, unresponsive. Mr. Izewski jumped in, grabbed the small child, and pulled her from the pool. The two-year-old girl was not breathing and did not show any sign of a pulse. Mr. Izewski immediately started CPR. 911 was called. Now, we got there as fast as we possibly could, and we were there within minutes, but those minutes had to seem like an absolute eternity while he was sitting there doing CPR all by himself on a two-year-old. Even the most seasoned, well-trained first responder is going to get awfully nervous when dealing with a small child. However, once we got there, the young girl had a pulse. It was because of his heroic actions that she is alive today. Now, she was going to be here today, but both her and her sister are sick. So, they do, again, they were going to be here as we honor Mr. Izewski. He did not hesitate. He did not panic whatsoever. I went back and watched the video of this. Truly saved this young girl's life, and she is doing fantastic today. So, on behalf of the Police Department, the Fire Department, the City of Shakopee, we are honored to recognize you for your heroic actions and sw- swing, excuse me, actions in saving the life of a citizen on July 27th, 2023. We commend your valiant efforts in service to the community. Thank you very much, sir.
Get him a Shakopee pin, too.
Sure.
Want to get a picture? Let's have council step forward. All right, is it time to adjourn yet?
You let us know.
We'll stop on a great note. Item number four, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda from staff or council?
Not from staff, no.
Council? Mr. Whiting?
I can motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Clerk, got the motion maker in a second? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number five, consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda from council?
No changes.
Staff, sir.
Lara?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second to the motion. Second by Mr. Whiting. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Reynolds, will you please read the consent?
Thank you, sir. Following are the consent business items for September 5th of 2023. 5A1 are the city council minutes. 5A2 updates our drug and alcohol use and testing policies. 5A3 approves downtown street closures for the Shakolandron Festival. 5A4 is a certification of delinquent sewer and storm drainage accounts. 5A5 approves a temporary liquor license for the Shakopee Chamber of Commerce. 5A6 is the Minnesota DNR Relief Program Grant Application. 5A7 is the Minnesota DNR Volunteer Fire Assistance Grant Award. 5A8 is awarded for bid for the Community Center boilers. 5B1 is the Community Center fee update for the sales tax increase that was recently passed by the state. 5C1 is the purchase of benches, tracts, receptacles, and tables from Anova for Windermere Park. 5C2 awards a contract for the concrete pad for the sport court to Kruger Excavating. 5D1 authorizes the purchase of survey GPS equipment. 5D2 is in agreement with the SMSC for McKenna Road Maintenance. 5D3 is the professional services agreement for Marystown Road Corridor Improvements. 5D4 extends the construction hours for the Highview Park Development. 5D5 is professional services agreement for Second Avenue and Lewis Street Parking Lot Improvements. 5D6 is the professional service agreement for the Colburn Drive Extension Project. 5D7 is a professional services agreement for the CR 78 pedestrian underpass at Zumbrow Avenue. And 5D8 approves a job description for the Water Resources Environmental Technical Technician Position within the Engineering Department.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We did vote on that motion, correct?
Yes, sir.
Item number six, recognition of involved citizens, citizens of Shakopee that would like to address the city council on an issue not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address something with council that is not on the agenda? Now would be the time to step forward. And third call, anybody that would like to address item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven. Business removed from consent, there is none at this time. Item number eight, recess for Economic Development Authority Meeting, a motion would be in order. Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to recess for the Economic Development Authority, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Delaney? Any discussion on the motion? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Madam President.
To order the Shakopee Economic Development Authority Meeting for September 5th, 2023. If staff could please make note of our attendance tonight, thank you. Number two, we are, number two on our agenda is approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have consent business.
Motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
And so we have a motion, a second, good. All right, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number three, consent business. Consent business, yes, sir.
I've got two questions on 3A, so let's take that off.
Take off 3A. Anything else?
I'll move the consent agenda as modified.
Thank you, sir. We have a, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on these? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now we will talk about 3A.
Thanks, Madam President.
You're welcome.
The question I guess that I had was, reading this, it says... Let's see, we're gonna, we're gonna use an interfund loan, which is gonna get paid back from the Tiff District. So... It's administrative funds that repay this loan? So, how much interfund, how many, how much administrative funds exist currently? And then, part of this says that funds could be used from wherever they need to be to make this happen, and does that mean any city funds or EDA funds?
Thank you.
Good evening, President and Commission members. So, what the resolution is doing, it's allowing us to spend the money before receiving the tax increment from the Canterbury Fund. So, it is a qualified project that we can use the tax increments for, we just haven't generated that increment. And the idea is that we'd use it on the administrative portion, so it'd be that 10% that would typically belong for administrative purposes, but we'll, you know, if you look at the life cycle of that district, it's upwards of $500,000 a year when it's fully developed, so there should be sufficient funds to cover that into the future. And your second question was in regards to, you know, which funds you could spend the money ahead of time, I guess, out of. It's written in a form that you could really utilize any of the funds that we have available. I think it would make the most sense to use the Capital Improvement Fund since it is, you know, related to a street project, it's a traffic signal improvement. But we know that there, that fund also, we have a number of projects slated in that fund, so we may look at using something like one of the utility funds in order to cash flow it until the increment is received. So, it's written with some flexibility that we would use what would be, you know, available at the time.
So, follow-up. So, wouldn't that take an act of the council instead of the EDA to utilize the Capital Improvement Fund dollars?
Well, this would be generated from future increment, but I suppose both parties would have to be amenable to that, but...
Even though we're the same people.
Yeah, and really, ultimately, what you're trying to do is with these tax increment districts, you want to show the intent that you're okay with spending the money before receiving the increment, as opposed to having the increment generated and trying to pick a project you're reimbursing that you haven't shown an intent for. So, the primary rationale for a resolution like this is just to show the intent that you plan on reimbursing yourself with increment funds and, as opposed to after the fact.
Yes, Commissioner Whiting?
President, I guess one could argue on this one that that Tiff District is one of the reasons why we would want to put a traffic signal in there, and it's county-driven anyway, but to help pay for that, so I could see it as a good driver for this.
Well, if I may respond.
Yes, go ahead.
You're correct, Mr. Whiting. When the Tiff was done for Canterbury, it highlighted the need for this intersection improvement in that traffic study, so you're right, Tiff dollars should be used for this, and I think they were intended to at the beginning of the project. The problem is, is that the funds don't exist from the Tiff District to get this done in the time fashion that needs to happen with the railroad and the county, and so now we're gonna borrow it from a fund that this body doesn't have the authority to take money out of, council does, and we're the same people. Technicalities, but if we're only generating, so let me ask you this question, can we use not only administrative Tiff dollars, but Tiff dollars?
You can, and that would actually, if we have leftover budget that we haven't utilized within the 23 million we have allotted for the district, this would qualify as those funds. You're limited because it's outside the scope of the boundaries of that district to 25% that can be spent outside of that, but we're well within those parameters currently. And I would defer the question as far as whether the city needs to have a corresponding interfund resolution to the attorney if he believes that would be needed. But it's more or less a book entry at the end of the year where you need to show that funds were used somewhere to pay for this ahead of the time before, you know, receiving the increment.
Would you like, Mr. Thompson, too?
Well, I'm pretty sure that if this was a separate body, a separate makeup of people on an EDA, it would have to have two separate, and I don't know if it does when we're the same people or not. I'd defer to the attorney.
Well, we could also offer something in the next meetings, consent agenda, qualifying it if you'd like, but...
Ma'am Chair, I think the simplest thing is to get this one adopted, and we'll take a look at it if we need to have a corresponding resolution, we'll come back on the consent agenda at the subsequent meeting for the council.
Perfect.
And whatever, you know, ultimately you feel comfortable with, I mean, even if we don't per se need it, if you feel comfortable, more comfortable with that, we can certainly make that happen.
What's the timeline for the county on this project?
When are we starting to break?
So, they're doing the engineering now, I believe it's 2024.
Yeah. President and members of council, construction wouldn't begin until the spring or summer of 2024, so the only cost we're incurring right now is engineering costs, which is part of the 1.5 million, but a small portion of that.
Can we do something with the railroad? I'm pretty sure we had to do something with the stacking with the railroad and all that stuff.
We have improvements with the railroad that we're doing as part of the project, but not prior to that construction in 2024.
And that project is currently out to bid, too, right?
The project is currently advertised and out for bid, and we're looking to award a contract to a contractor in October.
Thank you.
Not to muddy the waters even more, but we probably have authority under previous interfund loans that we could probably have done this without bringing this, but having this nice resolution that shows what we're spending it on, I think, is the best approach.
Best to be transferred. Thank you so much, Nate. Commissioner, what do you?
I can take it if you like.
Sure.
I would like to adopt resolution number E 2023-004, approving the interfund loan for advance of certain costs for a traffic signal in connection with tax increment financing, District Number 18.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All right, any more discussion? Discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you so much on that. Next up, our general business. And for general business, we have 4A, which we will start with the preliminary 2024 EDA levy and budget. And Nate, you're back. Yes, sir.
Good evening again. Tonight, we're asking for EDA consideration of the preliminary 2024 EDA tax levy. Similar to the city levy, this will set the maximum levy for 2024, so between now and the final adoption in December, it cannot be increased, it can only be decreased. We are asking for approval at the EDA level tonight. You will see a similar resolution at the city council on September 19th from the city council approving the EDA levy as well. The EDA levy is a limit of 0.0185% of the city's estimated market value. That cap calculates out to $1,334,000, so the levy being proposed tonight is well within that cap. The EDA levy differs slightly from the general fund levy in that it gets applied to all taxable properties within the city, including properties that are currently part of a tax abatement or Tiff plan. The EDA levy is also identified on the property tax statement separately from the city's general, general property tax levy. The EDA levy is specifically designated for economic development activities, and any funds that are unspent from year to year stay within that fund and remain for that purpose. For River City Center, the EDA is responsible for the business tenants on the main level, and then the CDA continues to manage the senior apartments on the second level. Currently, currently the CD, or currently the EDA owns the land and the CDA owns the building. The activity, which is primary lease revenue and related expenditures, are accounted for in a separate sub-fund of the EDA. And you'll see a slide with both the EDA and the River City Center coming up here. Staff is not recommending any change in the EDA levy, which is currently at $500,000. Additional funding is funded through a contribution of a half a percent of revenues from the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission, which was part of the negotiated revised pilot agreement at the end of 2021. The 2024 budget anticipates that contribution to be about $300,000. The expenditure side is made up of primarily personnel and professional services, which would include 100% of the Economic Development Coordinator and then 50% of the Planning and Development Director. $331,000 for professional services and engineering, which would include the facade loans, entrepreneurship programming, Main Street on the tap event, and then $150,000 for potential undergrounding of electric lines around Eagle Creek. For the medium value home, which is valued at $338,400, it equals out to be about $19 a year, which is about a dollar less than the levy impact of last year. And then, River City Center, so as mentioned earlier, EDA is the master tenant for the first floor commercial space. We are accounting for the activity, again, in a separate fund that is still within the EDA. We have budgeted $390,000 in lease revenue and $215,900 in expenses for a net operating income of about $190,000. Revenues are our best estimate, certainly be impacted by renewals and any tenant turnover that happens during the year. But with that, I can stand to answer any questions you have. Following this, there is a resolution for you to adopt that proposes the 2024 preliminary EDA levy.
Got it, thank you so much, Nate. Commissioners, yes?
Quick question, the $150,000 for electric lines, how is that covered under EDA or why is that under EDA?
Madam President and fellow board members, the Spuck's intention originally when setting that up is that we would share in some of the costs for economic development projects, so they're estimating somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000 to underground that line. If you look at that area, that's where all the new construction projects are happening, and Spuck had really wanted to do it, but they really wanted the city contributing, so instead of out of the general funds, we're taking it basically out of half of the money they're giving us, which they're happy with because that was one of the other intentions. The other thing is that in future years, if we get a major power user, they would look for a significant contribution back of their funds to help defray some of the infrastructure costs for that user.
Thank you.
Any other, go ahead, Commissioner Whiting?
The improvements being made to River City Center?
Sir, can you talk into your microphone?
The improvements being made to the River City Center? Where do we show that as an expense?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, I know we talked about this a little bit last year when I went through the budget, but that we've kept that out of operations. So, it is, we had it budgeted in the capital plan for 2023, so this current year, so it wouldn't impact 2024, but we've, but those expenditures are being coded to River City Center. So, if you were to look at, so you're just looking at the budget here, but if you were to look at the actuals for 2023, you'll see that, but we did keep it outside of the budget and shown it as a separate project for budgeting purposes, so you can see the difference between operations and capital, but it is being accounted for in this.
The reason I'm asking is, Madam President, is the dollar amount that we used to, for the improvements, there's payments that are being made to pay that back, and I'm assuming they're coming out of the EDA.
Yep, so the EDA and River City Center, all the same thing, it's all part of the same fund when you roll it up together, so that's where the funding source is coming from, and then it's being reimbursed through the Tiff Spending Plan, the available money we have with the Tiff Spending Plan, and then also coming from an interfund loan with the Canterbury Tiff District, which is the same type of development district and through their admin funds as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? What are the wishes?
Madam Chairman and board members, so the other thing is, we are in the process, as you know, you approved a contract with Helmut and Johnson to condo that project, so that is in the process of being done and will be done this fiscal year, so next year, the EDA will own, as a condominium unit, the two levels and the ground, and the CDA will own as a separate condominium unit, the apartments. So, if either party wants to sell, they would have that ability down the road.
I just have to tell you, tell staff thank you for putting it out and showing us how everything is broken down, I appreciate it. Good job on that. Wishes, yes?
With the undergrounding, it's always, and I've sat through the Spuck meetings, just to kind of give a little background on it, sometimes it's a burden with some of these big projects and budgeting, all of that and everything, so this relationship we've made with Spuck is gonna be a win-win. If you've been by the Armory, you've seen the power lines and the big transformers up there, it's something that if you're looking out your apartment window, you can see that we need to do that project down there, and it's gonna be probably along with some road work, I would think, or some other projects, who knows, but that needs to get done, but we gotta fund it somehow. So, all of these things that we have in here are needed, our wages, our things we've talked about, things we've budgeted for, things we plan, so with that, I'd make a motion to adopt a resolution, our 2023 Tac 005, approving the proposed special benefit levy of the EDA of $500,000, collectible in 2024.
Thank you, we have a motion from Commissioner Whiting, do we have a second? Mr. Delaney? So, we have, any more discussion? Discussion? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Up next, we have our award contract for tenant building signage for the River City Center, and on our dais here, we had the EDA award contract for the River City Center. These are further signs, and we are awarding it to Mathie, Mathie, Sign and Design, in the amount of $140,045, with a contingency of $28,000, for a total value of $168,045. Yes, Mr. Kerski, did I just say everything, sorry?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, person, you did. So, the, we didn't put the budget in your staff summary because that would have given all the bidders to know what the budget was, so as the mayor's pointed out in the past, sometimes showing our cards makes it more difficult for us to get competitive pricing. So, you can see there was quite a range of prices from $268,000, $297,000, down to $140,000, and I think we got five bids, it's a pretty competitive bidding environment, most of the bids were pretty close to each other. So, this company also did the... So, um, this company also did the Shakopee flats, they've done other projects in Shakopee, so they're pretty familiar with our process, and they've been pretty good to work with, so.
Yeah, thank you, yes.
Two questions. If, uh, I'm looking at the pictures, if, if a tenant changes out and it needs a new name put on it, how does that get done and who pays for that?
So Madam Chairperson and members, that'll be negotiated as part of a lease, so, um, you can see that these are pretty expensive signs, so we would ask the tenant to participate on a future lease.
And then the one sixty-eight oh forty-five, including contingency, where is that getting paid for, how is that getting paid for?
Madam Chairperson and board members, that was part of the original River City Center budget, we had a hundred and eighty thousand dollars budgeted for, um, signage, and the, uh, Crowe Sanderson asked the city to bid that because it's not kind of in their bailiwick, so we worked with the architects on the renderings and we bid it out, and I think we're pretty happy with the result.
Just one more.
Go ahead, no worries.
Do we have a ballpark of what it would cost a tenant to change out one of these signs?
Madam Chairperson and board members, the back signs are pretty typical, the front signs are a lot more expensive. So to give you an idea, the more letters there are, the more expensive it is, so, um, if you have a lot of letters, probably ten to fifteen thousand dollars, which is pretty typical of what they were paying for their own signs in the past. I think the signs were only allowed on the, uh, electrified signs were only allowed on the rear of the building, and they were running them anywhere from eight thousand to fifteen thousand. I think the other benefit is on the back side, those would just be panels that we can remove and then replace with the new tenant's names. I think we will, as you note, be challenged on the front because they're individual letters, so if someone leaves, hopefully we can reuse some of the letters.
True, alright, thank you Mister Kurski, so I look, it's good to see that we got some good bids, and that they're really good comparables, they're not like one way off from the other, they're very close to each other, so that's, that's good. Alright, commissioners, what are your wishes?
I like that this was actually a, a project that we didn't have to show our hands for the, um, for the bid, and we got to see where it came in, so that was good.
Oh, you have to fill in the blanks.
Okay, I, I'll make a motion to approve a contract with, um, Mathie.
Mathie.
He sign and design in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand forty-five dollars with a contingency of twenty-eight thousand dollars, for a total value of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand forty-five dollars for the fabrication installation of tenant signage at River City Center.
Motion, do we have a second? Mister Delaney, thank you. Any more discussion, discussion, see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next up, we have four C, so this is the facade improvement loan for a hundred Fuller Street.
Madam Chairperson and board members, so this is a request, uh, from the E D A. Um, if you remember, this project was back here, I think two or three years ago, when the applicant had proposed, um, basically doing some repaving and some landscaping, which was turned down because part of our facade program is it really has to be part of the building if we're gonna fund that portion. He has come back, he's agreed to pay for those, and then you have a diagram, he's gonna be replacing, um, most of the windows in the building. This building was built in a couple of different stages, so he will be replacing, uh, with this program, the windows along Fuller Street except at the very front. And he did get two bids, um, he understands he's gotta get a building permit, and if you remember, this is a program that they have to go spend the money themselves, and then they get reimbursed. We have our inspectors check to make sure we get the lien waivers from the contractors showing that they've been paid, and then we reimburse.
Got it, thank you.
The, the applicant is also here.
Okay. There you are.
Mister Kurski, the mailing address on the applicant is inaccurate.
Mailing address.
It's home address.
It's, there is no telegraph route in Shakopee.
Yeah, I think he meant, that's his home address, it's not in Shakopee.
It says Shakopee on the applicant, so if we mail it to that address, it won't get to you.
Yeah, just if we can update that.
Yep.
Anything else?
Yes.
Okay, okay, yeah.
And again, he's here to answer any questions.
You know, somewhere inside that building is one of the oldest buildings in Shakopee, but it's been built over so many times, and it's, uh, uh, I don't know if you found it in there, but it's in there somewhere, but, uh, um, yeah, it's really old building in there, but it's
Covered over.
Covered over with other building, um, but I would make a motion to approve this facade improvement loan in the amount of twenty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-eight, P J T Investments LLC for improvements at, to one hundred Fuller Street.
Perfect, we have a motion, second? Second, by Counselor, oh, who was the first?
Jay.
And then it was
Second was myself.
It was yourself, okay, good, thank you. Alright, um, any other questions, discussion? Discussion.
Are we having the address corrected? Do we have to, do we have to make that a part of our motion, or is that just a note?
Just direct staff.
Okay.
Yeah, direct staff.
The correction of the address, thank you.
A mailing address is correct, get the mailing address corrected so that any correspondence goes to the proper place.
That could be in the motion if you like.
So that's good with the mo- motion maker and the seconder, so we'll add that into the motion.
That was you guys over there, right, both of you?
Yes.
The ones that came up with the idea, okay, so there, it's good with them. Alright, um, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Alrighties, next up, we have our report, five A, our E D A bill list, anybody have any questions on our E D A bill list?
No questions.
No questions, alright, and number six.
I will make a motion to adjourn to um, October third, Tuesday, October third, twenty twenty-three.
Isn't it the nineteenth?
Nope, because we only do that once a month.
We would just adjourn the
So just adjourn, we don't
Because you don't, you don't, you don't know if they're gonna, if they're gonna have an agenda, staff brings that forward, and if they do have an agenda, they'll bring it on that first meeting.
So we have a motion
To adjourn.
Do we have a second for that? Delaney, thank you so much, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, we are adjourned.
Nice job. Call the City of Shakopee Council back to order, and we left off on, was it ten A?
Twenty-one, yeah.
Actually, okay, item ten A, discussion and ordinance concerning use of cannabis in public. Who is spearheading this one? Mister Reynolds.
Uh, first of all, let's start out with saying that we, you know, all we are doing right now is discussing this, there's no neat, there's no rush on this. Um, you know, we really don't realistically expect the city to be ready to license for sale until January of twenty twenty-five. But we do think that we need to have the discussions, um, to ultimately get to where the council wants to go when we're talking about, uh, the sale and use of, uh, of, 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 uh, cannabis products. As it currently states, there is today no prohibition for somebody standing outside of City Hall and smoking cannabis, they can do that. The question is, is what is it the council wants, and what we've seen from several different cities is that some are very restrictive. Prior Lake has a very restrictive policy that pretty much has said anything outside of your own home, or what is specifically outlined by the state statute itself, uh, we're gonna contend, we're gonna consider to be, uh, public property. Uh, others have simply said, uh, just city parks. So essentially, this is just words on the paper to, excuse me, to, to start the discussions on what council generally is looking for. And if we can come to a consensus, we'll go back and we'll wordsmith it and we'll put it in language that, uh, uh, we will then put through our process. An ordinance has to be, uh, out in the public domain for fifteen days, it has to be posted, and then ultimately, we would bring it back for your decision. So, but with that being said, uh, you know, I can read through the, the different, uh, language that we have currently, but in reality, i- i- it simply is whatever you're looking for in regards to the public use of the product itself.
So just to be clear, we're not looking at zoning issues, we're
Nope.
We're gonna look at use, consumption.
This is, this is consumption, correct.
Okay, so
Ultimately, we'll be, we will be talking about sale and where we can have sale and
Yep, okay, so
I have a question, even after talking about this now, even after the fact, someone could still be outside smoking or in a park until we actually make it action.
That's correct, yep.
Probably thirty days.
Which is a question I have because, because the city's tobacco rules, um, is that viewed as the same as smoking cannabis?
Uh, we specifically talk about smoking tobacco, um,
So
because we didn't write the law to incorporate cannabis, so what we now have to do is that if we want to mirror what we do with tobacco, then we have to add that language.
And if we did, would it be allowed outside the door right now?
Uh, it currently would not be allowed on city property.
Okay, so what I thought
Or in city parks.
Right, so I, what I thought we would
Unless you were in your car in a parking lot, as was pointed out earlier, yeah.
Okay, so what I thought we would do is just kind of, I know we all probably read this, correct?
Right.
Okay, so let's just go down the line and, and hear from each member on what they're thinking, and which end would like to start? Or would you like to start in the middle and go one way and then the other way?
I can start, I'll, um, so my initial reaction on this was, let's be less restrictive, or not as like intense as other cities. Um, my thoughts were, like, the other thing too is, what about, how do, you said, do we compare this to tobacco? Or my thought is, do we compare it to, um, drinking alcohol? Because it's so more socially acceptable to stand outside, um, a bar on First Avenue, smoking a cigarette, but you can't bring your drink with you, you can't stand outside with a beer, um, or you can't sit in a parking lot and drink alcohol, but you can, um, smoke a cigarette in your vehicle or smoke cannabis, so
But you can sit in the park and drink a beer.
With a
Not in your car.
Uh, you can't in your car, but you can at a park shelter.
Right.
So it's, that's, that's where it's like, where do, how do we view it, do we view it as, um, because you, I mean, with cannabis, it, it's intoxicating, it's not like a cigarette. Um, so do we view it as something that we're try- trying to prevent someone from driving? Or is it, is it for recreational entertainment, I don't, like, that's the thing, like, how far do we take it? My thing is just like, let's not be so restrictive on it that it, um, I don't know, people look at us like we're no fun or something like that, I don't know, it's
Big land, a big fun.
Yeah, it, uh, I think of the people that are outside, like, if someone's outside of Arnie's or Turtle's or whatever at eleven o'clock at night, and it's Friday, and they are smoking cannabis, like, how is that any different than someone smoking a cigarette next to them?
So, so let's stay high level with each person and not try to solve it with each individual's comments, let's just soak in everybody's comments, go ahead.
Um, restrictive, but not so restrictive, like, I, I was looking at this one, like, number four is like fifty feet from, no, that's fine. I think, um, option two was more of, um, my choice. So everything that's like city-owned and, um, I don't know, that's pretty much what I was thinking, because it, number four is like very fifty feet. Are we gonna be pulling out a measuring tape and, you know, if you're not fifty feet, I don't know, that one's like, oh, sorry. I'm super far from the microphone. Um, so to me, it was like option two, that's what I, I, I was thinking, things that are, um, places that are owned by the city. Um, because I was thinking number four is very, very, it's more restrictive, and it's like, it has like beat that you have to like, do we pull out a measuring tape and measure, I mean, I, I think it's more work for our departments, our police department, it's, yeah.
Okay, very good, Jay?
Sure, um, when we talked about getting rid of tobacco in the parks, uh, it was a lot about littering tobacco cigarette butts, uh, cellophane and things like, that was a big, big push for it. And here, if we started, uh, restricting on streets and things, it just gives the police, you know, it's legal. Now we have giving them the same right, or, you know, if someone's smoking, they can stop them and, and, you know, it's probable cause to initiate, uh, a search for whatever else, or who knows? But why add that, I'm thinking, to, um, to me, I was looking more at option one and taking out the outdoor properties. So any indoor property owned or leased and managed and controlled by the city government, because outdoors, so, uh, the parks, uh, if you got Lions Park, that, if you go up there and watch the disc golfers and the weed, the wind is going in the right direction, you know, there's smoking cigarettes there now too, uh, and, 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 and every park, and, and we don't, we don't, uh, jump on that. Drinking, like, like, uh, Councilmember Lehrer talked about, uh, drinking and, uh, marijuana use is more comparable than tobacco use in the park. So if you're, and there already are gonna be laws that if you're, you can't use it in your car and drive, like alcohol, similar to alcohol. Um, and we do have parks that we do allow alcohol in, um, but there are situations, like, we might allow alcohol at, uh, Topo Park, but that might not be a good place to smoke and weed, even though every tournament you go down to, you, in the parking lot, it smells like weed too.
Let me clarify here, because I, I think in order to have a, a venue would have to have a permit to allow the use during a, you know, concert or a specific event
To sell
To allow it.
To use it to sell it, but I'm, what I'm talking
To allow it, to allow its use at the venue.
Oh, maybe at the venue, like a concert or something, but what I'm saying is out in the parking lot
I think the state rationale for that is, okay, if, and I'm just gonna use an example, if, uh, venue A is gonna have a rock concert or some concert, and they're gonna allow cannabis use onsite during that concert, they have to advertise that so that people underage are not then allowed to, into that venue, I would assume, because you cannot be using these products around kids.
Right.
Right, that's the other part of the law, so
I would say that that is yet to be determined by the rulemaking of the state.
Okay.
Uh, but it makes sense
It would make sense.
That would be the case.
Right.
Uh, I will say that Canterbury currently, uh, does not allow the smoking of, of, uh, cannabis products on its property.
Sold the, the drink, the liquid product and the edibles at one of their events.
For the concert, you
I, I don't, I don't know if they have or not, I know
Oh, they have, yeah.
They, they don't, they don't allow the smoking of it.
So, uh, yeah, so I think, you know, as you're doing that, it's kind of more like, uh, aligned to drinking when you're driving, so I, I don't see it as the streets and the, and the alleys and, and the parks even, uh, unless there's, uh, children present, you know? But I don't think we need to re- write it into code if it already is.
Mister Delaney?
I'm looking at it from the point of view of, you have to have some guidelines. Um, I mean, example is you go to the park now, you can walk the trails and you, periodically you can find somebody puffing up. Um, the question becomes is, is if you are a parent with a kid and you dial nine-one-one to have a complaint, where's the teeth at to enforce anything? So that's, that becomes a problem. Um, for me, I looked at option four, it's, it clearly states out, I mean, there's leniency. Right now, if you go to a concert at X venue, you can get a whiff of somebody in the back, puffed up, coming through the audience, it's not, but the difference being nobody's taxed security to go back there and grab somebody a strong arm and take them out, everybody's just at the concert, kind of enjoying themselves. Um, I'm sure if you did ask security or brought it to the venue, whoever's running it, they would probably go back there and, and take care of business. But I looked at four just because it was clear, it doesn't leave things vague to where you're kind of, well, sort of maybe, okay, we're gonna have cigarettes here, beer here, and it just lays it out there. So for me, I would go at four because there's no in-between, there's no, you have, still have a little, some gray, you have the flexibility to not act or act, but it does give some teeth to a parent with kids over at Memorial Park, and somebody walk on the trail, puff puff, pass pass, and all of a sudden, you have a concern, so, for me, it was four.
Jeez, and I guess maybe I'm, you done Mister Delaney?
Yes, I am, thank you.
I'm, I must have looked at this completely different from everybody else, and I apologize, but, you know, the first thing that comes to my mind is, how do we, how do we keep this out of where kids are? Um, and, you know, is it a separate s- action a school, that district has to take for school district events? Whether it's, uh, you know, kids playing soccer, baseball, whatever, um, you know, you've got parents and other people, grandpas watching their grandkids playing, and how do we, is that? So my, that's my first question, who, is it the school district that has to do that, is it the Who, is it the school district that has to do that? Is it the city that does that? Because there's, there's city property, but there's school functions on city properties. There's city functions on school properties and it's like, okay. I'm back to what I began with. How do we keep this away from the kids?
Well, my thought, what you just said is, like, let's say, um, let's use for example, the Seventeenth Street Sports Complex. That's city owned.
Right.
And it's in the soccer association uses it, school uses it, but it's still city property. And I feel like that would cover, you cannot use it on city property. So I think regardless of who's using it at that time, whether it's the school or association, it's still city property and it's not allowed.
And property is the defining characteristic.
So if we have a city event on school property.
It's ultimately up to the school to decide what they're going to do.
So, so whatever we come up with, should, should that be taken by our staff to school staff and trying to make something that works together?
Well, I don't think there's any doubt that the school staff is going to ban the use of cannabis product on all school facilities. Uh, I don't think there's any doubt about that.
Okay.
Believe, um, if I remember correctly, and I'll double check, I think they maybe already had made a rule that you cannot use it on school property, so that might already be taken care of.
Okay. So, so that was my first thing I thought of, of how do we keep it away from the kids? Because that's.
Twenty-one.
Number one, that's in the state law too.
Yep.
Um, the second part is, okay, so reality is if it's, you know, nine thirty-five at night, somebody's walking along the river trail, there's nobody else around and they light up and they're smoking this stuff. How would anybody know?
Yeah, that's true. It's still illegal.
Um, do you wanna make criminals out of people that are, are, aren't really posing a hazard to anybody? Probably not. But, but then on the other side, I mean, if you've got, you know, rhythm on rails, rails going on, uh, on the streets, kids are there. So how do you enforce the, you know, this can't be where kids are or, or kids are expected to be? So that brings me to city parks. I mean, if a city park, almost all of our city parks have the expectation based on the equipment that's there, that kids are going to play. So, you know, if you wanna be lenient enough to say, yeah, you could use it in the park, well, you, you now you're violating state statute with your own ordinance because you're allowing it to happen where kids are going to play. So this is just kind of the things that I've been thinking about on this topic and, and I'll tell you flat out, there's the legislation from the state and, uh, you know, how they rule this out is somewhat of a train wreck. But here we are trying to straighten out the tracks and, and put some common sense to it, I guess. I mean, I understand what they were trying to do, legalize something that the population in general is, is supportive of. But they sure kind of put everybody in a pickle with how they've done it. So that's how I, how I was thinking about it. Now where do we go? Mr. Whitey?
You know, I'd like to offer something in the middle to try and cover. And, and I wasn't thinking about option four and in fact I crossed it out. And I know, uh, council member Contreras didn't like the fifty feet thing and who's gonna measure it, and I, I get that and, but if you.
We can change the feedage too.
No, I mean, if you look at number four and you, uh, it pretty much spells out, you, within fifty feet, and I'll read it, if you want fifty feet, any city maintained outdoor swimming beach, playground or outdoor facility used for sports or athletics, park shelter, warming house, refreshment stand, public restroom or within fifty feet of city maintained outdoor entertainment facilities, which might cover some of the things you were talking about, while the facility is in use for any private or public event. And, and you can go on to read the rest of it, but if I, I would support this if we took out the last line after bus stop and it says, "On any city park property, including trails located within the park property." Cause basically what you're saying with four, if you take that last line out, is that you can't be within fifty feet of any facility that we own, uh, any building or, and it hits all of the different venues. Uh, if you added your concern or within, uh, fifty feet or a child, you could even add that or something like that. Child under eighteen or something. Um, but I think you're covered under the state law with that. I would support something like that.
Mr. Delaney?
Because even if you take the, the designation of feet out, you still want some teeth. It's, 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 you, you don't know when you'd need this until you need it. What I'm saying is you're, again, you're at the park. You're out there with your kids or grandkids and all of a sudden, like I said, you go over there now, I, I run, walk the trail, bike the trail, more than bike and ride the trail. But you, periodically people pass through and they're doing their thing. But what if you have mom or pop who doesn't want their kid at the park playground with somebody puff puff, pass pass? You gotta have some teeth to say, hey, okay, can you stop if they don't pursue to stop?
Well, I, I don't think that the, the quick passage on a trail is gonna be the issue. I think it's gonna be the problem person that's going to push the, the limits and, and make themselves the problem. You know? They shouldn't be at, at a park and a playground. Obviously there's kids there, right? That's covered under state statute. Should probably be in whatever we do to be consistent with the state statute. Because really that's, that's the first, my first goal is to make sure that people that are legally using this stuff aren't doing it around kids. How, how do we best accomplish that? And then for those that are responsibly using it and staying away from kids, how do we not make them criminals for, for, for trying to be responsible?
Yep.
Right? And we could ban them to just their own house. I mean, it's kind of.
We don't do that for drinking.
Because it's not gonna be the reality. You know? So, so if we're looking at option four, let's all look hard at option four and maybe read. Mr. Reynolds, why don't you read option four for us, please?
Sure. Option four, and I'll go up from the beginning. For purposes of this section, "Public place," quote unquote, is defined as, option four, "Within fifty feet of any city maintained outdoor swimming beach, playground, other outdoor facility used for sports or athletics, park shelter, warming house, refreshment stand or public restroom, within fifty feet of a city maintained event or any part of a property upon which any city operating building," excuse me, I, I missed a line there, "of a city maintained outdoor entertainment facility, while the facility is in use for any private or public event, on any part of a property upon which any city operated building, other than a park shelter, warming house, refreshment stand, public restroom or outdoor entertainment facility is located, within fifty feet of any publicly operated transit station, within twenty-five feet of any public bus stop on any city park property, including trails located within a park property."
So question, Mr. Reynolds, the last sentence when it says twenty-five feet of any public bus stop on any city park property, is this, is that saying twenty-five feet from any park property or is it saying not on any park property?
It's, it's, it's a semi-colon, so on any city park property inclusive.
So it, it, it wouldn't be allowed on any city park property?
Correct.
So it'd be twenty-five feet away from that.
Plus twenty-five feet away from the bus stop or from city park property.
And twenty-five feet away from any trails.
See, that last line makes the whole first part of it.
No, Ms., Ms. May, I think, I think what, what it says is, that the way that it's drafted is you can't have it within twenty-five feet of any public bus stop, semicolon.
So that twenty-five feet.
Or on any city park property, including trails located within. So the twenty-five feet does not apply to the park property or the trails. It applies to the preceding one. That's how I read it.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
That, that doesn't mean that's how you have to adopt it, but that's how I read it.
Do we all understand that?
Yes.
Okay. So.
That doesn't make sense though.
It doesn't make the whole first part of it. The last sentence moves the whole first part. If I'm reading that right.
Well, I think it's just trying to be more, it, it's more clarifying than simply saying all park property.
Well, you could, you could insert, uh, instead of having park property, Jay, you could say playgrounds and you can make it a hundred feet instead of fifty from a playground. So therefore you could be on the other end of the park with nobody else bothering nobody else, but you're not gonna be around that playground. Right? And you shouldn't be.
Only concern would be that that is different than what we have for tobacco. So we do not allow tobacco at all in city parks. So that would be.
Because of trash.
And that's not it.
I don't, I don't think it was the trash issue. I think when the high school students came and petitioned, they were specifically talking about the health reasons.
Yeah, the clean air stuff.
Well, and if somebody's far away from them, there is no health issue. All right. So what do we do now? Where do we go? This side. A lot of discussion over here. Let's hear from this side.
So if I understand correctly, like you, um, let's just use Huber Park for an example. If they're not over by the playground or that, the bathroom shelter, but they're over by the, um, uh, gazebo where the, where the steps are built or the benches are built in, if they're sitting there using, and as long as they're not over by other people that are over by the park and the buildings, you're saying that that would be okay?
That's the city park.
Or because it's on city property. It's, or the park, it's a no-go.
The better question is, what is it you want to see?
Yeah, there you go.
Well. Maybe I could just help clarify one thing. As Mr. Reynolds points out, the current code prohibits use of tobacco in city parks. We've drafted one ordinance that says, okay, now we're gonna add these things to that ordinance. That's the second one. Uh, it's not prohibited. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Jay. It's, right, we don't prohibit use of tobacco within fifty feet of a park. It has to be within, within the park. Within the park, okay? So I think the thirty, thirty thousand foot level is, is do you wanna sort of be consistent with tobacco? Would say we don't wanna use it, we don't allow its use or sale in a city park, which includes any city trail. And do you, but do you wanna do that? That would be the minimum. Or do you also wanna go farther and say, oh, within fifty feet of some of these other protected uses? That's, I think that's the big picture.
Okay, got it. Um, I would say in line with the tobacco versus putting in feet restriction. Because I would, for me, I would expect to not see it at, on a park property. But if I was walking down First Avenue at nine o'clock at night on a Friday night, I would, would probably expect it there.
Run that past me one more time.
So I would not, I, I would feel like a citizen would expect to not run into cannabis smoke at a park, like, like tobacco. But if they were like downtown on a Friday night, they would, like, they wouldn't be surprised if they ran into it. So I feel like if we, as, as long as we treat it like, I feel like if we treat it like tobacco, um, I think we would be good.
What, uh, what do you think? What a mess, huh?
I, I started off like, let's be a little more lenient, but now it's like, let's pull out the measuring tape. Um. I don't know. I don't, I, I, I mean, I see that there's more consensus with number option four, if that's, if still what we're. What was that?
I think I misread that.
You, oh, no, no more.
I was gonna say, I'm okay with not having specified feet. What I'm saying is you still need teeth when that, again, you don't need it until you need it, is what I'm saying.
Right.
You know, you, you don't know what you're gonna run into until somebody calls and says, complains. And then you don't have any teeth to do anything. It's said, well, okay, well, it's, it's not covered in any ordinance, so.
The last sentence, under definition, why don't you go ahead and read that out loud for us, Mr. Delaney?
On any city park property.
Nope.
Sorry, which one?
Under definition, the last, last, uh, comma, as it may be amended from time to time.
Ah, I got it.
I can assure you.
We're gonna be amended.
That we're gonna be amending this as we learn, as we go through this.
My other thought, it's just a thought so you can discuss it.
Counselor, uh.
The question, I think one thing might say, do you wanna start off kind of less restrictive and see if that gets the job done and then amend it later on? Or do you wanna start more restrictive? And maybe it's your call. I mean, I think there's a philosophy.
It's a good question. Delaney?
Well, I won't, I'm applying the time. Yeah, there's gonna be educational period where you have to, everybody has to find out what's allowed and not allowed. So I'm, I mean, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Whitey?
Currently we allow alcohol at a couple of parks.
Yep.
We know at Lions Park, there's a real popular disc golf. And, and we know that sometimes it gets, it gets used out there even before it was allowed. So to me, uh, we talked about having alcohol or some, maybe even having a restaurant at, 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 uh, Lions Park. Currently Huber Park, you can have liquor in Huber Park. Topah serves liquor. I think that would be maybe pushing it if we allowed it in Topah. But to me, at least Lions and Huber, I think we should carve out.
So you would allow it to be used at a neighborhood park?
I, I just wouldn't put a rule on it. I would just leave them out.
Yeah, okay. So if somebody's using it, uh, High Wathah Park at the playground, they're not breaking any laws, you can't tell them to stop. Then what?
Are there people there? Are they alone? You know?
Well, if there's.
Are they causing trouble?
If there's nobody there, there's nobody to say they're doing anything wrong.
Seeing no evil, hearing no evil.
And not to confuse it even more.
Right.
But to throw this out there, we can then also make the exception between the edible, drinkable version and the smokable version. And, you know, that's, cause everything that we're looking at here, we've defined the product all as one. That any of these products will not be allowed in this space. So that's just something else to consider as you.
Good point.
Oh, if somebody's walking down the trail, they pull out a stick of gum or a, a edible, put it in their mouth and continue walking, I mean, seriously, how, how would anybody know?
They wouldn't.
Well, you're not going to. The only pro, the only time that you actually enforce any issue, any law, is when there's an issue.
Right.
We don't run around, you know, looking specifically for things to then, it's when there's something that arises.
Right.
That it becomes an issue.
Which usually.
As Counselor Delaney had pointed out, when.
Which usually takes more than one person. So, so let me ask this question to counsel. Are, are we looking at being more restrictive or less restrictive in, in general? More or less restrictive?
Asking me?
Yep.
I'm not looking to.
It's just a yes or no?
Uh, as far as what we have.
More restrictive or less restrictive in general?
I would say more restrictive because you need teeth when you need it. I'm not saying go around and, you know, with the tape measure and everything else, but still, if it does need, if somebody makes a call and you, nine one one, and one of our, one of our officers shows up to have to, you know, take care of a situation, last thing you wanna say is, well, by ordinance, I can't do anything but say, have a good day.
Okay. Mr. Whitey?
I would say less restrictive, cause I don't want this to cause, be a, a starter to, uh, create a situation. I mean, it's, you know, an issue, all right, we're gonna go, hey, they're smoking weed over there. We're gonna go give them a ticket.
Right. I'm, I'm on the less restrictive side, but more restrictive around playgrounds side. And, and functions where kids might be derby days, uh, not derby days, uh, rhythm on rails, functions where there's an expectation that kids are gonna be there. So, uh, that's my.
I was going for the less restrictive since the beginning, just, um, but I, I, I do understand where children are around.
I mean, we try to think common sense would dictate, but they don't use stop signs for the.
It's in the state law.
Right.
They don't use stop signs either, so.
Less restrictive.
Okay. So less restrictive, um. What's the number one thing council wants to protect? Is it freedoms of people that wanna use a legal product? Is it making sure that kids aren't, um, put in a position to be around it? So what's the, what's the priority? Mr. Whitey?
We, we only semi do it with tobacco, keeping kids away from tobacco. It doesn't keep mom from smoking in the car. It, it's legal. It's just a paradigm shift. And to me, it's, we, we just got to, uh, work with it and there are gonna be times, and I think the state law says you can't have it around kids and I don't know the language right here, but that's the way I would wanna lean to.
So let me ask this. Whatever we come up with, with less restrictive, do we wanna incorporate that exact wording? It's not allowed to be around kids. Cause that is state law, right?
I think so. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So.
I'm good with that too.
Okay. So how do we handle parks, trails, roads?
Ms. May, just keep in mind what we're doing here, is you're attempting to regulate use of this product in public places. Is you're attempting to regulate use of this product in public places. Saying we don't want it around kids takes it completely outside the realm of public places. It puts it in, it puts it in, it puts it in a lot of other areas, so we need to be...
We'll finish the sentence. It's not, not allowed...
Kids in parks.
Not allowed, not allowed around kids in public places.
Okay.
Okay? I mean, I was trying to use the common sense again.
Yeah.
You're a lawyer, so...
Deeper on that one?
Yeah.
That's good, but you, yeah, I get what you're saying, yeah.
Other further, Mr. Reynolds on this, right? If the four out of five are saying less restrictive, that gives us pretty good guidance. But also, I think we want to address the mayor's concern, but, but even within that, we want to be a little tighter in areas where kids are, kids are located in public places.
And, and I was going to basically say, you know, we can now take this back, craft three or four sentences that we can kind of, you know, look at, you know, knowing that the council wants to be less restrictive, but there is some degree of concern around children in public places. So why don't we, why don't we do that? Why don't we give us the opportunity to go back and then do some crafting and see what we come up with, and then we'll bring that back and see what you have to say. Sounds good.
Okay.
Very good.
I'm sure we're gonna see this many times over the years.
We've got a couple of years to work on it.
And the reality is, is, is the mayor alluded to, this, there's a lot of unknowns, and it, it's just gonna be difficult.
Right.
I mean, there's no doubt about it.
Mr. Reynolds, I think we've got an opportunity, because right now, I think there's parts of the population that are, are purchasing and legally, maybe not, and using in public. Matter of fact, uh, there was, we know there was somebody using at one of our stops on National Night Out. You, I, and the Chief of Police, we could smell it, but, um, it's on private property. I think we're gonna see some educational opportunities on our behalf by situations that happen between now and then, not, you know, not necessarily here, but within cities around us. Um, and we can incorporate what we learn from that.
And we will continue to monitor what happens, because we're all, we're all experimenting.
Right.
You know, that's what it boils down to.
Right. Alright. I am ten B one. Award contract for sand venture for demolition, concrete, masonry, earthwork, and utilities. Mr. Kerski?
Mayor and Council, I'm happy to report that bids for this section came in under budget. So what's left is structural steel roofing, and then mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, and then tenant finishes. So we still have about, I think, three point four million left in the budget. And our contractor is pretty happy with the activity we're getting and how competitive the bids are.
Questions of staff? Couple of questions for you. So we're, we're gonna do the second phase. What happens if the third phase comes in and we're above budget?
Mayor and Council, I think there's items, just like we did in the swimming pool, that we would eliminate. I think, we had a meeting today, RJM's pretty comfortable with what's going on in the market. We're seeing, as you can see, some pretty aggressive pricing, both from the signs we saw today and from these bids. I think there were some very disappointed people that did not get awarded contracts at this bidding, because they allowed one contractor, you could combine different scopes to save on mobilization, and so hensies actually took three of the categories automatically because of that. I think we'll see very similar, um... We're gonna get a roofer and a steel person that'll be working together. Bid should be back to you. I think they're out on the street right now, so we should have them probably in the next, uh, if not the next meeting, in the first meeting in October.
I have a kind of a technical question. I don't know, I've seen a few of these over the years, but on the first page, it's got, hensies and suns listed twice, and on the notes, it's for the same portions of the project. When you go to the next page... Individual item, it looks like the next pages are broken down by three A to A.
So, so Mayor, they were, they were, this is, I think, bid package two, there were different categories. So you could bid on utilities. So actually, hensies alone was not the low bidder for utilities. But by bidding, I think they got demolition, um, grading, and utilities as a package, they beat everybody on a gross price if you added up all the low bidders. So they allowed that, um, because mobilization, you know, every contractor's got a certain percentage to bring their crews on site. Hensies is local, and I think that they have the ability, 'cause they're right in Shakopee, to be able to man up that project pretty easily.
Okay. Alright.
And I will say, the, that's a very large masonry contractor. They got the footings, foundations, and walls. They're doing all the brickwork, um, at River City Center. So I was kind of surprised that they were so competitive, 'cause it's a pretty large company. I think we're finding the larger companies are looking for work, particularly through the winter time.
What's the wishes of counsel?
Are these, just a question, are these different motions? Well, are these different motions? Are these different motions?
Mayor and Council, you can do it in one motion, just awarding the separate contracts.
Okay. Alright, I'm ready. May I make the motion?
Sure.
So I'd like to make the motion to approve awarding the following contracts and amounts. Two A, thirty-one A, thirty-three A, demo, earthwork, utility base bid at two hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred. SM hinges and suns. And then three A, con, uh, concrete and masonry base bid at five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Axel H. Omen, Inc.
Sir, a second to the motion?
A second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Nice job, Council Contrers.
I tried. Go slow.
Let's see here, that brings us to eleven A workshop item, Shakopee City Government Fire Department presentation. And, you know, they're gonna be shortest yet, so their budget's gonna get the last hit of any of the finance it was in public works, I think, got hit pretty good.
Hundred and forty years, they, they got a lot, a hundred and forty slides, right?
Right.
Brought up the, uh, public work slides, but then, you know... I ran out of space. Uh, Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. As you know, I've only been here for this, my ninth week, not that I'm counting, but, um... So you're gonna get a lot of the outside perspective tonight in the fire service. I've got thirty-eight years in public safety, uh, most recently with Egan as the fire chief. So tonight, we're gonna give you a brief, brief look at the Shakopee Fire Department, and then more importantly, some of the things that are coming up in the future for, for Shakopee Fire Department. Just as a side note, I love, love history, and it's really, I think it's an honor to be here as part of the hundred and fortieth year of the Shakopee Fire Department. Something that you should be very proud to have, a, one of the oldest fire departments in the state. Pretty neat, indeed. So we're gonna talk about fire department staffing initially. And we'll start out with the most important part of our, our department. Without them, we wouldn't be able to do what we do, and that's our part-time staff. You'll hear a lot of different terms, volunteer, paid-on-call, part-time. The state's actually been working on, it was much like the cannabis discussion tonight. They've been talking about terms for firefighters for a while now. Typically, volunteers, there's no pay whatsoever. Paid-on-call is you've got a pager and you're waiting at home for the pager to go off, and if you're available, you come to the station. And then part-time, you're working shifts. And we transitioned here in Shakopee to a part-time model where our firefighters work shifts. We have forty-six part-time firefighters. Thirty-four of them are EMTs, which is a very neat, neat thing to have, emergency medical technicians. It's one step below medic. All of our firefighters get paid sixteen eighty-eight an hour. And for their commitment to be a part-time firefighter with shifts, they have to work a minimum of three shifts a month. And they're either sixteen-hour shifts overnight on week nights, or twelve-hour shifts on weekends. So it's a pretty, pretty big commitment to be a part-time firefighter. We also have eight full-time staff, four of them here tonight. Everybody knows Ryan, of course, and we want to thank Ryan for being the acting fire chief for the last several months. Ryan's our assistant chief, also an EMT, been with the department for twenty-two years. Joe Simon's here tonight. He's our admin captain during the day. He's also a part-time deputy chief, and he's been with the department for sixteen years, also an EMT. Dave Giddings is here tonight. He's a full-time firefighter, EMT, um, during the day, and also our other deputy chief on a part-time basis. He's been with the department for eighteen years. Tom Pitchneider, he's our fire marshal. He's been here for thirty-eight years, which is pretty amazing. He just celebrated his thirty-eighth, uh, year anniversary a few weeks ago. So we thank Tom for that accomplishment. Not here tonight is Brad Purington. He's one of our full-time firefighters and a part-time lieutenant. Rob Interbow is a full-time firefighter, EMT, part-time captain. And Corey Murray is a full-time firefighter, EMT, and a part-time lieutenant at night. And of course, me with nine weeks. There's really three divisions within the fire department, administration, operations, and prevention. We all wear a lot of hats, so we all kind of take different parts of these roles, but primarily administration, which is by far the most interesting, is, is myself and Joe Simon. You know, I first thought, when I got the call to consider to be the interim fire chief, that, um, City Administrator Reynolds was kind of considering me because of my experience with Egan and all the changes we went through there with our, with our staff changes and doing a city gate study. But really, I found out that he was a big office fan. And when I went into his office, I seen all the office stuff, and he asked if I'd get my business cards as Michael Scott instead of Mike Scott, so I had to make some changes there. But either way, I'm here. So back to administration, you know, there's a lot of things that we do that, again, aren't very exciting, but there's so many mandates, regulations, and laws that we have to follow from both a state and national standpoint. There's a tremendous amount of training we have to track to make sure all of our firefighters are certified, and EMT training, um, you know, OSHA and NFPA standards. We also do a lot of our own scheduling. We coordinate with the city's payroll, IT, and HR staff to get stuff done with our, within our department. Prevention, um, Tom and Rob really oversee the prevention division. Again, Tom's our, our fire marshal, so he reviews all the new construction plan reviews. Also goes on-site and does inspections of new facilities being built. He's also responsible for investigating any, any fire in our community, whether he does it by himself, or if it's more com, complex, or bigger fire loss, he might reach out and have the State Fire Marshal's Office assist us. Something exciting that we're just starting to work on with our full-time firefighters, they're all certified fire inspectors. So we're starting to get into existing buildings, which really has never been done here in Shakopee in the past, unless there was a building permit pulled or some other reason to get in there. With all the different facilities in, in Shakopee, you can imagine how important this is to help reduce hazards, get our pre-plans done. So if we do respond there for an emergency, we have a plan of the building and where the fire alarm system is. But more importantly, build relationships. You know, we did this in Egan, and it just paid dividends of our firefighters going out, meeting the facilities people at these different facilities throughout your city. And then when there's an emergency or something that, that, um, business needs to ask the fire department a question, they, they know somebody on a first-name basis, which is kind of nice. We also do a tremendous amount of community outreach. You know, the award that we gave out tonight with the police chief talked about CPR and how important it is to start CPR immediately. I mean, that can make the difference between saving somebody's life or not, because no matter what, when you call 911, it's gonna be several minutes before you get police, fire, or an ambulance on scene. So we do a lot of things at the fire department. Tomorrow, for example, um, Ryan is leading a CPR class for some of our public work staff. And I believe our city engineer's gonna be there. Don't bring your drone. So we do a lot of education. Our, our fire department open house is coming up October second. Always a, a nice night to have families see our equipment. I always tell people that's their equipment, they paid for it, so it's, it's nice to have them come in and look at the trucks and the stations. Operations, um, obviously, we respond to fires, hence the name. But we also do a lot of other stuff right now in Shakopee for EMS calls. It's a team approach, so the police department responds to all EMS calls, along with our private ambulance service, Alina. Fire responds to high priority calls or when requested either by police or the private ambulance service. We also, in operations, have a tremendous amount of training to do. We train every Monday night. It's either EMS training, hazmat training, fire training, water rescue training. I mean, name it, we, we have to do it and be certified in it. Couple of things that are unique about Shakopee is we have our own dive team and water rescue team, and high-angle rescue team as well. And Dave kind of leads up some of that, so it's pretty, pretty impressive. Typical apparatus that you'd see at any fire department, um, you know, fire engines, rescue trucks, ladder trucks. Airboat's a little bit unique, but with what we have here with the River Valley, it's, it's a nice piece of equipment to have. I would like to come in, Bill Egan, and especially Tom Larson over at our city garage. Being here for nine weeks, it's pretty impressive, um, the amount of maintenance they do on our equipment and how responsive they are to, to getting our stuff back on the road. We've, we've had a lot of issues with some of our trucks, and it's pretty impressive to see the cooperation we get from the city staff. We have two fire stations in Shakopee. Both are on Veering Drive, which makes it easy when you're the new guy looking for a fire station. One was built in nineteen ninety-eight, Station One, and then Station Two was built in twenty twelve. Two very, very nice stations designed for paid-on-call models. So we'll, kind of leads us into the next section of the presentation. You recently approved us to hire CNH Architects to take a look at Station One. You know, there's a number of things with Station One. One, it's twenty-five years old, so there's some things that are starting to wear out and need to be updated and replaced. But again, it was designed for a paid-on-call, um, department. When that station opened in nineteen ninety-eight, there wasn't any full-time staff at the fire department. So, um, you know, we need to do something about sleeping quarters and bathrooms and showers for firefighters that are sleeping there overnight now. Some office stuff, live training. I'll get into some more detailed slides here. For example, here's the, uh, the dreaded temporary sleeping quarters that started in twenty twenty. You know, and three, almost four years later, we're still using them. It's a old conference room that we're now using as, uh, sleeping quarters. Councilmember Delaney recently came over and got a tour of the fire station. He actually wanted to come back and, and sleep, sleep over sometime, so he's always welcome to do that. Sleep deprivation is, is one of the, um, top issues with firefighters that work twenty-four hour shifts. I don't know about you, but when I wake up at three in the morning, I, I usually can't get back to sleep, and these guys can attest to that, 'cause I send them emails at that time. But it can lead to a lot of things, obesity, diabetes, heart disease, depression, alcohol use. So obviously, we want a, a good place for our firefighters to try to get a restful night's sleep. I mentioned the offices. When our fire admin area, and the, the station was built, there wasn't any full-time staff, so the offices were really designed for, uh, volunteer leaders for the department that would come in after their regular job, you know, work on a couple of things and head out. So, uh, we, we share a lot of offices. The fire marshal and the fire admin captain share an area that was originally a, a storage area for office supplies. And a lot has changed since nineteen ninety-eight. We used to try to put the fire gear lockers as close as possible to the entrance to the station, so the volunteers could get to their gear and get out to the truck as quickly as possible. You didn't put any doors or any separation, so they could have that quick access. What we found out over the years with cancer being the number one, um, leading killer of firefighters is that all that gear, even though we wash it, it's off-gassing, and it shouldn't be in an open area, especially going into living quarters or offices. So part of the thing that we're looking at with CNH, for example, is trying to close off this area and provide some better ventilation, so it's not coming back into the living areas. So that's kind of a nutshell on the, um, CNH project. Other things that we're working on right now, um, I applaud the fire staff, especially the full-time staff that are here tonight. It's been a busy nine weeks. A lot of these things were started, um, a year or so ago, and obviously, for different reasons, within the fire department, they were put on hold. So we're full steam ahead and taking our foot off the brake pedal and, and trying to get a lot of these things done. So our staff's been working diligently on policies and procedures with a company called Lexipol. They started online blue card incident command training, which, um, is forty hours? Fifty. Fifty hours online that they have to do in addition to their other, other items that they do daily. We've been doing a lot of strategic planning within the fire department, working on some response plans and updating our uniforms to have a little bit more professional look. And I mentioned the remodel plans already. When I think about Shakopee being a hundred and forty years old, and just, you know, I, I think back to how, how much it's changed in that hundred and forty years. And with that, think about how much the community's needs from the fire department has changed in that hundred and forty years. You know, what, what once was a pretty concentrated area downtown... hundred and forty years. You know, what what once was a pretty concentrated area downtown is now sprawled out across a lot of square miles and growing very rapidly. I also think about how the fire department has changed in those hundred and forty years. You know, we've pretty much been a traditional volunteer department for many years, transitioned to a paid-on-call department, added our first career fire marshal, and then our first fire chief, first firefighters in twenty thirteen, and then in twenty twenty, when COVID was going on, we started the part-time model with our with our firefighters. You know, nationally, we're starting to see volunteer firefighters leaving at a record pace across the country, especially in Minnesota. Minnesota has one of the highest percentage of all volunteer departments. The reason that's changing is the requirements to be a firefighter are getting more intense. There's more training. You know, before, it was just fire training. Now it's rescue training, hazmat training, all the things that I mentioned earlier. And if you think about your availability right now, I always think when my dad joined the fire department in nineteen seventy-one in Eagan, most moms were stay-at-home moms. He had a very steady job for most of your career. Kids' activities were, if you wanted to play ball, go down in the park. Now you fast forward to today, and everybody's extremely busy, and then again, the requirements to be a firefighter are becoming more intense and the call volumes going up in bigger cities like ours. So it kind of brings us where we're at, at crossroads for the future. I mentioned the part-time staffing challenges, increased call volume, and the types of calls that we go to. So we really need to build a foundation for the next hundred and forty years of service to the community, and our goal is to provide a predictable, reliable, professional, sustainable staffing model that'll that'll last well beyond all of us being here in the city government. And again, it's not a unique problem to Shakopee. If you look online, you'll see articles, you know, a couple of examples here. Pioneer Press recently talked about from Eagan to Anoka, firefighters' emergency of staffing. Even Ryan was quoted here in twenty seventeen talking about Shakopee's turnover with part-time firefighters. And, you know, that was our biggest challenge in Eagan. We could continue to find people that were interested in being firefighters, but they'd only stay for two to three years. And you just, one, it's it's a big investment financially, but two, when you're doing something part-time, it takes you longer to get good at it. So we're just seeing that skill set really go down with our part-time staff. Whatever our neighbors doing, you know, Savage added nine full-time firefighters recently. Prior Lake just added twelve full-time firefighters and started twenty-four-hour shifts. Bloomington, which was the largest all-volunteer department in the state of Minnesota and one of the largest in the country, just finished a Citygate study about a year ago and hired twenty-four full-time staff, and they're planning to hire eighty full-time staff. So a lot of departments are starting to change. Again, you recently approved us hiring Citygate to do a fire department services evaluation, or what I like to call a roadmap for the future. What we're hoping for with that is early twenty twenty-four, we'll come back to mayor and council and present you with options for your future. You can decide how fast you want to move, how fast. You don't want to move, what options you like, what options you don't like, but we're excited to get this done. This will be a complete evaluation of our services from facilities, apparatus, staffing, and kind of give us, again, that roadmap for the future, so you don't have a lot of surprises coming forward. We use the same company in Eagan in twenty seventeen. There's been a number of metro cities that have used Citygate. The the result in Eagan was we completely overhauled our staffing model, reduced the number of fire stations from six to three, reduced the number of apparatus. We kind of did a switch where it used to be the police department responding to all the medicals in Eagan with our private ambulance, and fire now responds to all the medicals, again, because of that EMT status and then freeing up the police officers for police-related calls. Eagan won two awards for our work on this study, and one was with the League of Minnesota Cities for an award of excellence, and then the other one was from the State Fire Chiefs Association for Fire Officer of the Year. And I think if you were to speak with your counterparts in Eagan, mayor and council at Eagan, they would tell you that this is the best thing we ever did for the fire department is having this study done, and the biggest regret is we didn't do it sooner, because we moved stations and built stations and remodeled stations, thinking it was always going to be that part-time model. You know, we're down the road. We probably didn't need to do all that if we had that roadmap for the future and really knew what we were gonna do. So it doesn't mean you have to do anything immediately, but at least gives you some options hopefully for the future. With that, again, with only being here for nine weeks, one thing that's really apparent with the equipment that you provided and the facilities that you provided is there's been a tremendous amount of support from the mayor and council, and I just want to applaud you for supporting the fire department and hope that it continues. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Questions of staff. Mr. Whiting.
Thank you, Chief.
Scott, appreciated. Your short time here has been amazing and great to see that new look, you know, just a fresh set of eyes taking a look at it. And as far as the fire department services evaluation, if you bring that forward, I think this is the perfect time for something like that, kind of take a look, where are we going, where we been? So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I'll just say thank you, too. I know you came in that, you know, sometimes it's hard, but I appreciate you taking on the the task. And this evaluation, seriously, I feel, you know, like you said, and I think about it like a like our comp plans, right? It's like, like you said, it's it's just, it's not set in stone. It's it's a it's a guide, right? It's like you said, a roadmap, and it it just gives you options. So like like, just like you said, so thank you, and I appreciate it. Thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Lara.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments, just an overall general thank you to our fire department, just like our police department. We, I feel like we are excelling and at one of the best in the metro, if not the state, and I'm really excited to hear what the Citygate plan has to say as well. So so thank you to all of you guys and extend our thanks to your comrades as well.
Appreciate that. We will do that.
One of the things that I wrote down here was, we went from wood stoves, muddy roads, horse-drawn equipment. Fifties, no commercial sprinkler systems were installed or required. Twenty twenty-three, we have sprinkler systems required, stand pipes, a water system that's laid out throughout the city with fire hydrants at every corner. And if that's not available out in a township, you have tankers, pumpers, portable pools, and all kinds of other equipment to make it happen. So, you know, we can't lose sight on on the improvements that have been made over time in society in general. It's always nice to think about how we can do things so much better, but it's it never hurts to take a step back and recognize what improvements have been made. Them improvements, you know, we're always gonna have a fire hydrant close by as we develop, which was not the case just a few years back. So some things coming into consideration. Sprinkler systems, big in some of these structures where they would just burn to the ground without them. And look at the response. If you go back and look at some of Jay Whiting's historical videos and stuff of the old fire guys running down with the the wheeled pumper and trying to put out a massive blaze at like the Shakopee House or something like that, it was just an amazing feat to even consider, right? So we're so far ahead as a society in this area from the past that, you know, we certainly don't have to reinvent the wheel.
But we're not using the Cisterns anymore.
No.
Let's actually thank you for all you do. Public safety, for me, is really important. Firefighting is a calling, just like police. I think it's really outstanding what you do, and I know coming in is hard, especially from outside in, and I'm excited about the things that are happening with the fire department. So thank you and thank the staff and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Any bill list?
No questions.
None for me.
Councilor Contreras, good? Eleven B, liaison administrative reports. Which side did we start with last time?
We got the beginning of it, so it's over here.
Over here, all right. Okay, liaison reports. Did Spuck meeting tonight? It was actually just before this meeting, so I had to go here and come over here. I did get a chance to go to MMUA conference up in Duluth. That was it was eye-opening, a lot of interesting stuff.
MMUA?
MMUA, municipal, Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association.
Thank you.
Yep. A lot of great information. Got a chance to go, several breakout sessions. One was about our our push to twenty forty clean energy. From engineering standpoint, I think it's gonna be tough, a lot of new technology, a lot of involvement there, but I did learn a new term called energy credits. I think that's gonna be the the closing gap for that. So that was that was interesting.
I already have that power cost adjustment on my bill. Is it different?
That's the same thing. You're paying for the clean energy, which I think about four percent of the state may be doing. You can, for additional monies, you can pay for going to a hundred percent clean energy at this time.
Yeah, and your greenhouse gases.
As far as other thing, we do have a AMI. We are discussing allowing people to opt out. That got shifted to the next meeting. Had a great discussion tonight. Residents showed up to to voice their concerns about that, and that's basically remote monitoring for your water and for your electricity. And I think that, oh, purple lights. If you're seeing purple lights that is on the streets, those are being replaced. That they did break. The vendor is, there, Spuck's in process replacing those lights. The vendor, they were under warranty, so if you see those, it's not a concert happiness. That's not a Prince thing. And that's it.
May I ask him a question?
Sure.
Are those purple lights permanent? Because I have heard complaints already.
No, they're not are not permanent. They're going through replacing those.
The effect of an eight turn purple, so they're getting replaced under warranty, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Mr. Whiting?
But it was cool for the time, right? Just MVTA, I did bring my notes, but we did talk about the initial ride to the Renaissance, and that went well. So I think, I haven't heard any complaints since then, after the first, that was after the first week. So hopefully, we continue that advancement. That's all I have.
You know, I heard from somebody that my wife and I drove to Jordan during that Renaissance, and it is way better than it used to be. So whatever they put in place worked out pretty well. Councilor Contreras.
Thank you.
Nice job, Jay.
I attended the SCAL executive committee meeting on the first, and that was pretty much, it was it was a good meeting. It's SCAL letter of support, so there's gonna be like two levels of letters, and I will share this with with everyone, just especially mayor, because, you know, they ask for mayor signatures here and there. So there's a level one where general supportive letters for project businesses, SCAL members already existing in Scott County or already vetted by SCAL. I mean, there's a couple things that would make it a level one, and then there's level two, when they're asking more of a, there's like a, how can it, let me let me read, letters that address a new business, policy, effort, or project, letters that indicate total agreement by SCAL memberships in organizations, letters that could create controversy. So, you know, those would be, they would like come back to, because, you know, like, for example, our council, we like to know before we say yes to something, so that would give us time to talk about it and, you know, then say yes or no if we'd like to participate in that signing of it. The other thing, it's time for, we talked about SCAL lobbying activities. There was consensus consensus at the prior executive meeting that the relationship would continue with the contract lobbyists. The other thing, SCAL executive support concept of legislative committee to oversee SCAL lobbying activities and plans for the future, and they are looking for volunteers for the committee amongst, you know, the ones who are already there. And the last part is the twenty twenty-four legislative priorities. SCAL members have been asked to submit their SCAL legislative priority ideas and suggestions, so they'll be reviewed. The submissions will be reviewed at our October and November meeting, at the October, and then the November meeting, and they will present to SCAL, they will present them to the general membership. And so if there's any any ideas that we have as, you know, council, it would be the time now to submit those, so.
Well, I can tell you, the first one that pops to mind is the broadband expansion push at the state house where there's also the need at the training facility, which was one of their major costs, to upgrade the internet infrastructure. Them two seem to go hand in hand to me. It could be a cost savings on the training facility side, too, and it gives the state the opportunity to stand behind their pledge.
You know, it's.
That's just a first stroke, but if you could get that information out there for staff for the rest of council, that'd be good.
That's great. I will.
And just to take off on that, the one project that we do have in there is the the hub that has been traditionally, for four years now, I believe it's been recognized as a as a SCAL project, so that one will also go forward from the legislative point. But we will, we will get that information out to everyone, and then you can kind of figure out what it is, that you have other ideas. Essentially, what happens then is that we then, as a staff, bring that to the overall SCAL body. It's essentially debated. It's never really voted on. We kind of try to do things by consensus, because there is no voting in SCAL. But normally, we've been very good in getting the things that we're looking forward to move forward, and that's included the Riverbank Stabilization Project, which was, if you'll recall, also we have had on for several years now as well.
Continue, I'm sorry.
That that, well, that's it for me. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Lara?
All right. School board meeting on the twenty-first of August. The big ticket item that was discussed was they acknowledged Tom Schlepper's thirty seasons of coaching Shakopee baseball. He is now retired, so they congratulated him for his thirty years of his coaching and the impact he made. And then on August sixteenth, I attended the SMSC movie screening of the, I believe it's called Dakota versus United States Government. Very, very informative, very interesting movie. I as well, Michael, have my history, like my history, and I found it very interesting. So it was a good night.
Very good. Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you. My report, sixteenth, I attended the tribal movie premiere myself. My wife came along. August seventeenth, local government workforce at the schools put on, I think, I believe it was by the chamber, good discussion with myself and Commissioner Brennan. We tag teamed that time slot. Let's see, twenty-third, Blue Lake Treatment Center here in Shakopee. The state and the feds, Energy Department there, were were there for the solar array that's theirs, that they're using to power up. I can't remember how many megawatts that place creates, but it's quite a bit. I was kind of surprised. Twenty-seventh, we attended the Intergovernmental Working Group. Mr. Kurski, engineer, city administrator, myself, with the county, Prior Lake Tribal Government and who am I missing?
County.
County, yep. Anyway, we kind of discussed THC from all different people that were there. We discussed infrastructure projects and the ORF. I think the ORF closing down sometime later twenty-four, if I got my numbers right, then the one will be opening up July twenty-four, I think, as a shoot-for date. Don't put that in stone, because, you know, pretty high-tech, it might might have some curveballs in there, but between now and then, they're gonna be talk, considering a satellite program in each community for some of the basic stuff. I think they said their their mulching stuff will stay out in this area out here.
Correct.
So, yeah, that was pretty good. And that's all I have. Staff?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Other business?
Mr. Delaney.
So Spuck just went through putting together a succession plan, and that's for basically their key positions. I know the, I believe Chief Tate has one for his, for the officers where they, how they get, I guess, training or get, if they're looking to, for their next step to be chief, they kind of go through that whole training process. I don't know if the city has anything in position like that. It kind of popped up on my radar if we voted on it tonight and Spuck, I just, oh, I didn't know if the city had a plan like that.
Well, we do. If I would happen not to be here one day, Chelsea is actually in the process of not only being in a group of assistants that meets regularly every month to talk about those types of things, but is getting ready to get her certification as a credentialed manager. So we're working on that from our end.
Do we, police department, I think, has a chief and two captains, so I assume the captains learn part of the chiefing role, and then the fire department, well, they already have that. They have the assistant chiefs and so on and so forth, so that next one downward should be learning. So that next one downward should be learning them things. So I think you're asking the question.
Is there a written plan?
Are we currently teaching, like in our our captains at the police department, our assistant chiefs at the fire department, our various supervisors in public works? You know, if if they're interested, the next steps.
Yeah, there's, is there a formal, again, Spuck's plan is literally, I mean, it's laid out, it's formal. Numerous pages where they go have all the steps listed of, you know, different training options, whatnot, so.
And I think, you know, a lot of ours is administrative, educational, structure type things. But when you look at a Spuck person, somebody that actually goes up the pole and deals with a transformer, different animal because that's, you know, you do that wrong, you're dead.
Well, we could always do written plans. It's up to council.
I'm just putting it out there, I'm not directing or anything, that's, let you know if that's, council wants to.
Well, I guess it would be a good, can we just find out what which departments kind of train their secondary upward?
Yes, sir. Or if there was training levels and goals and objectives in their trainings.
Right. And, you know, I have to assume that that's if if these individuals want that. Because we we've had some very good cops, Officer Barney Clark, if you're listening, awesome cop. He wanted a certain graveyard shift, didn't really want to move up, and he loved his job and he was very good at it. Spent many years here, so teach their own.
One more thing on other business. Just wanted to give an extra thank you, Lord, and those guardian angels who watched out for our staff today. Mr. Kurski's here and John Sullivan is at home, safe and sound in police department, fire department, everybody. Thank you for being out there for everybody.
I have two items, if there's nobody else on other business. I have two items. The first one is I received an email tonight from Paul House, is that, Poli House? Is that the lobbyist that the city works with? They were looking for some letters for some of their initiatives. So we'll have to get that out and see what council wants to do with some of that, like the SCAL stuff, same thing. The other one was, the council twice, I believe, has asked unanimously to bring back a business subsidy policy for hourly rate.
Sir, can you please speak into the mic?
We asked council, I believe it was April, and then again in in June, maybe, business subsidy policy updates. We wanted to change the or modify the hourly rate requirement.
Let's discuss it.
And and that was supposed to come back, it didn't, and then we asked again, and it probably got shuffled in the mix, I know it did, but.
We'll we'll get, we'll get it in. My apologies.
Can we put a date in the in that now, tonight, that we're here?
October.
Pardon me?
We will get it to you in October.
October, okay, that's all I had.
Yeah, my apologies for that.
Any, nothing else? Item number fourteen.
Make a motion to adjourn Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM. Second?
All at once, second? No? Mr. Delaney seconds. Mr. Whiting made the motion. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, motion passes, we adjourn.